Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Christine, would you call the roll, please?
James Barnes.
Here.
Frank Peterson.
Here.
James Bevan.
Here.
Diane Manderwell.
Here.
Sarah Chilichet. Abson. Larry Chesney.
Here.
Ed Hawkins. Abson. Kevin Weiski.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here. Okay, thank you. Next is election of officers, and we have election of chair from City of Sparks. Are there any nominations?
Yes, Chairman Barnes, I would take great pleasure in nominating my colleague Diane Vanderwell for that chair position.
Chairman, I'll second that motion. Commissioner Weiski. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Peterson and a second by Commissioner Weiski. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, then I'd call for a vote on the election of chair. All in favor of Commissioner Vanderwell?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Congratulations, Diane. Then we have election of vice chair. That's from the City of Reno. Do we have any nominations for that?
Your Chairman, Commissioner Weiski, I nominate Peter Gower.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Weiski, a second by Commissioner Vanderwell for Commissioner Gower. And are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, then I'd call for a vote on the election of the vice chair, Peter Gower. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous also. All right. Salute to the flag. Commissioner Weiski, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiski. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Weiski and a second by Commissioner Vanderwell. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gower, a second by Commissioner Chesney. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? That carries unanimously. Christine, do we have any public comment?
I mean, you have one more.
Okay, Mr. Evangelotis? Oh, I'm sorry.
This is on the agenda items.
Oh, okay, yes. Would you come forward, please, and state your name and address?
Lemon Valley Swamp Lake Recovery Committee. Lemon Valley. Lemon Valley. For the record, I stand before you today because my understanding is you guys are the governing body over the City of Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. I say so because it seems to me like it's the fox watching the hen house right now. There is some things that are happening that are affecting our valley and the North Valleys because the City of Reno has been able to do the annexation and the developments and listen to the developers, and these are issues that we are having problems with because with the flooding that we have had, it keeps going back to the idea of flooding is Mother Nature versus not development, not downstream affluent waters, that kind of thing. So anyway, to give you an update, because most of the Sparks people have not heard my spills, so I am going to be giving you my spills. As of October 1st, 1982, to September 1st of 1983, there was 12.42 inches of rain. Okay? And September, or I mean of October of 2016 to yesterday, we had 13.78 inches of rain. That's a difference of an inch and a quarter or so. We did not flood in 82. We flooded this year. The big difference, and the only difference between 82 and now, has been the growth and the affluent waters, the discharges from the sewer plants, that kind of thing. It's made a big difference on what's happening out there. Nobody's taking into consideration these are closed basins. Nobody's done a geomorphic study. I have done my research, and the state of Utah, where the Great Salt Lake did a geomorphic study. It doesn't only just do the ground, it takes in the whole environment to decide where they flood and not flood. Since they're flooding 82 and after they did the geomorphic study, they did their planning to make sure that, number one, they didn't affect current residents versus other residents. They made sure that the new residents weren't in floodplains so that they could flood or push the water on other people. Right now, there's a developer back in Lemon Valley called North Valleys Investments that is looking at developing on Arkansas. That is this land you are seeing right there. Okay? That is also on the FEMA floodplain map. If you see if they build here and they build it up so that they don't flood, you see all this over here? They're going to end up hitting all those residents because they're pushing the water. It is, we only have an 1,800 acre lake, and the stats are out there showing that 2 million gallons of water a day, affluent water going into that lake at an acre a foot is over the 1,800 acres.
The three minutes are up, so you can...
Okay. What I can say is that you have codes out there that the City of Reno has violated, and I think you need to be looking at them. And I think that your 100-year floodplain is not set up correctly for Swamp Lake, Silver Lake, and White Lake, and it seems that needs to be looked at because we are in danger of losing our lives out there with the mess that is being made by the City of Reno right now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 7A is RPC Resolution 17-02. This is resolution of appreciation for the service of Art Spurber as the vice chair of RPC 2016 to 2017 and as a member of the RPC. I'm going to ask Kim to read the resolution, but I'd just like to say that Art served as my vice chair during the last year, and I think he did a fantastic job. We really hate to see him leave. I know he's going on to another board, but I just very much appreciate your help, Art, during the last year. Kim, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is on?
Yeah.
Whereas Art Spurber served as a member of the Regional Planning Commission from April of 2013 to June of 2017, representing the City of Sparks. And whereas Art Spurber supported the inclusion of the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency in the Portland State University Urban Sustainability Accelerator Program, which provided TMRPA with guidance in evaluating the Truckee Meadows service areas. And whereas Art Spurber participated in thoughtful deliberations regarding the refinement of the region's center and corridor plans, specifically transit-oriented development corridors and other plans to support the regional form and pattern. And whereas Art Spurber supported the work of TMRPA to bolster economic development, including their participation in the IBM Smarter Cities Challenge, which identifies the creation of a shared data platform to serve the region and the creation of the regional economic resources portal. And, whoo, whereas Art Spurber committed his time and effort to evaluating and analyzing the land use decisions that were brought before the RPC, always asked good questions. And whereas Art Spurber helped to guide the development of the First Shared Work Program in conjunction with the Washoe County School District, which led to the undertaking of the residential housing study. And whereas Art Spurber was a great supporter of the TMRPA housing study and in disseminating this information to the community. And whereas Art Spurber always provided strong leadership during his tenure as vice chair and brought his A-game to every discussion and knocked it out of the park with his participation. And whereas Art Spurber always treated staff with a great deal of respect and appreciation, now therefore be it resolved that Art's colleagues on the Regional Planning Commission and TMRPA staff express their gratitude to Mr. Spurber for his conscientious public service to the Regional Planning Commission and for his commitment to the role of vice chair of the Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you, Kim. Would any of the commissioners like to make any comments on this? Commissioner Weiski?
Chairman, thank you. To Art, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with you here and also between Reno and Sparks, knowing that there was good communication between the two, and your leadership and insight was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, Art, thank you so much for your service, and I had the pleasure of serving with you when I was on Washoe County, and then I also got to a short amount of time on City of Sparks, so you're going to be sorely missed.
Hey, Art, would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay.
They come on? I used to be on this side of Sparks over the last seven, eight years. Anyway, I want to thank so much. There are so many people. Kim, especially you, you've been great with me, you've been so helpful. This body is so important to our region, and I've really enjoyed being part of it. Commissioners, I have so many good friends on this thing. Everybody does an excellent job. It's such an important item on this body, and I will always remember it, and I've just been very happy being on it, so thank you.
Thank you, Art. Appreciate it.
Take a vote.
Yes, could we go ahead and have a motion on the resolution?
I move to accept the resolution.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Chesney, a second by Commissioner Vanderwell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Go to 7B, RPC Resolution 17-03, resolution of appreciation for the service of Charles Reno as a member of the RPC. And again, before Kim reads the resolution, I'd like to say that I think Commissioner Charles Reno always served very well, always had good questions, good comments, and we really appreciated all the support and assistance you gave us here on the commission. So I wanted to say that, and then I'd ask Kim to go ahead and read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas Charles Reno served as a member of the Regional Planning Commission from July 2015 to July 2018, and whereas Charles Reno participated in thoughtful deliberations regarding the refinement of the region's center and corridor plans, transit-oriented development corridors, and other plans to support the regional form and pattern. And whereas Charles Reno was always very prepared with good questions and comments on items at regional planning commissions and committed to perpetuating good planning in the Truckee Meadows region. And whereas Charles Reno supported the work of TMRPA to bolster economic development, including their participation in the IBM Smarter Cities Challenge, which identifies the creation of a shared data platform to serve the region. And whereas Charles Reno helped to guide the development of the First Shared Work Program in conjunction with the Washoe County School District, which led to the undertaking of the residential housing study. And whereas Charles Reno endorsed the efforts of TMRPA in moving towards increasingly data-driven thoughtful analysis for public and private decision-makers and was continually committed to supporting comprehensive and innovative approaches for planning in our region. And whereas Charles Reno participated in many discussions and workshops on items of potential interest regarding the 2017 regional plan update, including the Truckee Meadows services area. And whereas Charles Reno always treated staff with a great deal of respect and appreciation and will always be affectionately referred to as Chuck in the annals of regional planning history, now therefore be it resolved that Charles's colleagues on the Regional Planning Commission and TMRPA staff express their gratitude to Mr. Reno for his conscientious public service to the Reno Planning Commission. I'm sorry, Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you, Kim. Would any commissioners like to make comments on this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Gower.
You know, I always appreciate Chuck when he's in our meetings and the questions that you bring to the table and the passion that you also bring to the issues, because I know you care about the region, you care about the City of Reno, and I think that's what, you know, we can all ask for in our commissioners on this body or at the city or county level. So I certainly appreciate that, and we're going to miss you.
Thanks, Chuck. Thank you. Anyone else care to comment? Commissioner Reno, would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay.
Appreciate that. I appreciate you said Chuck at the end because I haven't heard Charles so much in my life. You know, I thought I was in trouble by my mom, you know?
You're saving it till the end.
But no, I appreciate it, and I appreciate being on the body here and serving the City of Reno Planning Commission. It was always good. I hope everything goes well with the update on the regional, and I know that Kim and staff are working hard with that, and it was a pleasure being with the commissioners, and I really enjoyed it, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reno. Do I have a motion on this resolution?
Oh, Weiski, so moved.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Weiski and a second by Commissioner Gower. Any discussion on the motion? Not, I'd call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously.
And, Mr. Chair, we also have, as a going-away present, your nameplates in case you kind of, you know, forget who you are at some point, you'll have those to take with you.
Is that kind of like breaking their plate?
Okay, thank you. Item 7C, public hearing, regional plan, conformance review, City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan Amendment 3650 Whittaker Road, CR 17-006, for possible action. Mr. Tolly, I believe you're the presenter on this.
To the record, Chris Tolly, regional planner, the case before you, and there should be a map here, but I'll just pretend like there is. Guess before you, it's conformance review for 3650 Whittaker Road, Amendment to the City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan. Staff report begins on page nine of the packet. As proposed, a project would amend the land use designation on the property from low-density residential to intermediate-density residential. The property, as noted already, is located, is actually located at 3650 Whittaker Road, generally between El Rancho Drive and Sullivan Lane. Property is located within the McCarran Ring Road, which is considered to be a core region. Staff didn't identify any significant conformance issues with the amendment and recommend approval based on the findings listed in the staff report. This does conclude staff's presentation. City of Sparks staff, caramel be is here if any questions arise. And then here's a suggested motion overhead.
Are there any questions for Commissioner, for Mr. Tolly? Okay, seeing none? Thank you, Chris. Aaron, do you want to speak to this at all, or?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, then we have a public comment. Mr. Evangelotis, would you come forward, please?
Chairman Barnes, members of the Regional Planning Commission, for the record, Greg Evangelotis, 1365 Hilltop Road, Reno, Nevada, and I'm here to support the recommendation. I believe that it helps, obviously, with the housing challenges that this region is facing, and I think it's inside the McCarran Ring Road, and I think it meets all the criteria for a good infill project. Includes my presentation. If you have any questions, that's your priority.
Are there any questions for Mr. Evangelotis? Okay, seeing none? Thank you, Greg. Appreciate that. Okay, nothing further. We can go ahead and take a motion on this.
Art, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chesney?
Yes.
I move to find the 3650 Whittaker Road Amendment to the City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan in conformance with the 2012 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, based on the findings listed in the staff report. And that's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Chesney, a second by Commissioner Peterson. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is item 7D, for possible action, informational presentation on ethics in government agencies. And, let's see, we have... Let's see, Bon Navarez, would you come forward?
Just get your name and your address. Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for indulging me for your record. I am Bon Carras Fitzpatrick, Executive Director of the National Office of Public Affairs. I would be requested an address at Center 4 West 9th Lane, Suite 204, for this meeting. So I appreciate the involvement, obviously, even though I know it's probably been a long day for most of you. This is part of the commission's regular outreach effort to provide sort of information to our public officers and employees out here in our communities about the scope and applicability of the ethics in government law to the work that we're doing on behalf of the public. And so I know I have a short time. You guys can thank me now, because sometimes these presentations go as long as two hours, so I'm going to wrap it up in 20 minutes and give you kind of the 50,000-foot view of ethics in government law, and then kind of turn it over to you if you have any specific questions. And also, you have my contact information if there's ever any individual issues that you guys want to discuss or address. But ultimately, you know, one of the things I find that's so interesting when I come out to our communities to provide an ethics and government overview, I usually receive about a 20% feedback from our public officers and employees who've, number one, never even heard of the Commission on Ethics, and, number two, didn't realize that they were subject to the jurisdiction of the Ethics Commission with regard to the ethics in government law. And the word ethics sort of kind of implies for a lot of people this sort of morality police, you know, of the commission over our work in public office. And sometimes that's misleading because what we're really doing is we are applying the law of conflicts of interest to our public officers and employees with regard to our work on behalf of the public, and we are not the morality police. Sometimes those go hand in hand, but the reality is there are some laws that don't always equate to ethics, and sometimes our ethical code doesn't always mean something's illegal. And so I hope to kind of give you some guideline about what we're really talking about. Certainly, we hope that public officers conduct themselves in ethical and moral fashion, but when it comes to enforcement of the ethics law, we really are talking very specifically about conflicts of interest between our public duties and our private interests. And when the legislature has taken a look at this issue, what they've really said is in our public capacity, we should be making decisions on behalf of the public and not self-dealing. In other words, not being, making decisions that really affect our own private interests in a manner that is more so than that affecting the general public. And so when we look at those private interests, it seems to be getting ever convoluted in the more sophisticated the world becomes with our business interests and the way families have developed over the years. And so the legislature has decided for us what types of private interests create conflicts for us in our public capacity. And we know the sort of most tangible, easy-to-recognize types of conflicts are going to be financial interests. If we're being asked to make a decision in our public capacity that has the potential to affect our own personal financial interests, then we have a conflict of interest. And I guess what I should have started with saying is that the ethics law doesn't tell you you cannot have a conflict of interest. The ethics law tells you we want you to recognize when you do have a conflict, and then depending on the nature and scope of that conflict, the law is going to tell you whether you can act or how you may act in a particular matter. And so the financial interests that I was referring to, really, those are the more obvious ones, right? We know if we're making a decision that affects our own pocketbook in one way, whether a detriment or a benefit, then we potentially have a conflict of interest. And so the next line of analysis for you is going to be, how does that affect your financial interests? Does it affect you any more or any less than the group that will be affected by the matter you're deciding on? And those types of decisions going forward. More often than not, if once you recognize that conflict, we're going to ask you to disclose that to the public. And then again, when you develop the nature and scope of that conflict, if you appreciate that it's a material impact on your interests, you're going to be required to abstain from participating in that particular issue. Beyond those financial personal interests that are at stake, the legislature has also decided for us that we have relationships with certain people that are so close in personal in nature that the law is going to impute their personal interests to become your personal interest to create the conflict. So in other words, the law has said that those personal relationships include our, certain of our family members, certainly our spouses and domestic partners, any other family members within third degree of consanguinity. I love these terms the legislature comes up with. Our employers, persons with whom we share significant business relationships, and other substantially similar relationships. And so as I alluded to at the outset, we can't tell you you can't have a conflict of interest in this state because Nevada operates from our highest level of government down to citizen-based legislators, citizen-based representatives in government. So we know we're bringing you to the table by the benefit of your professional and business experiences and your familial relationships, and all of those types of things come to bear on the decisions that you're making on behalf of public. So oftentimes, when we're looking at whether or not the conflict is a disqualifying conflict for purposes of representing your constituents' voice in government, it's going to be the materiality of that impact on those interests. And so, you know, one of the examples I like to provide, because it tends to get lost on not only the representatives of our state, but also the attorneys who are representing our public officers, has to do with sort of this relationship with business partners. And so what happens very often is that people will say the matter before them doesn't affect their own interests or their own business relationship, but it could very well affect the interests of your business partner in an unrelated business. And so it's the relationship itself that's creating the potential conflict for you. And so I just ask you to be cognizant of the fact that if a business affiliate of yours is before your body in any capacity, may not be in the capacity in which you share a business relationship with that individual, but you have a relationship with that person, and the law is going to statutorily attribute their private interests to become your private interest. And you have to figure out how the matter affects them and whether that's a disqualifying conflict for you. So I wanted to kind of shoot really high, talk about what a conflict of interest is and what the personal interests are that have been defined by the legislature in that fashion. The law, the provisions of the law for your purposes, more often than not, are really going to involve your disclosure and your abstention requirements under the law. But we also have a whole host of statutes that talk about, you know, prohibitions against misusing our positions in government to benefit private interests, acceptance or prohibition against the acceptance of gifts, certain prohibitions against entering into contracts with government in our private capacity because of the role we serve as public officers. And so I just wanted to bring to your attention, there are a lot of provisions out there where you see yourself in any capacity, making any decision on behalf of government that has the potential to impact your private interests. There's probably a statute that governs that in one way or another. So with that kind of highbrow view, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I really could get into the weeds if you have those questions, but really, I wanted to turn it over to you to ask if you guys had those types of questions for me, and I can be responsive in that way.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Navarez Fitzpatrick?
Yes, Commissioner Weiski? Thank you.
Describe to us the requirements for filling out the forms required, please. Because I've, being a regional and city, I, in enough years, I've gotten different descriptions.
Sure, and that's a great question because the law recently changed in the 2017 session for precise data purpose. We do have a lot of public officers elected and appointed who serve on multiple commissions or committees. And those of you who are required to file the financial disclosure statements with the Secretary of State's office will probably be familiar with the language in those statutes that talks about one form is sufficient for all of the roles you hold in your government capacity, and so we just implemented... And so we just implemented that same law into ours. So once you're, if you're appointed to serve in a position that's affiliated with another position that you've already filed the form, then you're covered. But in terms of the requirements, for appointed public officers, you are required to file the form within 30 days of your appointment and you're only required to file that form once for each term in office. And if it's an indefinite term of office, in other words, it's not a set few years, that applies a lot, for example, to myself. I'm appointed by the commission, so I'm a public officer, but it's indefinite. In those situations, we are required to file that form on or before January 15th of every even-numbered year. And so that probably covers the majority of you unless you're elected officials and then the timeframe is on or before January 15th after the year you're elected, for each, once for each term in office. Does that help?
Any other questions? Okay, seen none? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I have some handouts if you guys are interested. It also has my contact information on it. Be happy to provide those to the committee.
Do you need any kind of a motion on this? And let's go to item 8, reports.
Members and directors' reports. Next meeting, August 9th, 2017. Kim?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, our next meeting is August 9th, 2017. I believe we're back at Washoe County at that point. And there will have a couple of items regarding the regional plan update. At that meeting, we'll be providing kind of a little bit more next steps in where we are and we'll be moving, we have a governing board meeting on August 10th where we're asking them to approve a couple of requests for qualifications and we'll bring those forward the night before so that you can take a look at them in terms of what we're asking for for some assistance around the regional plan update. And we have a meeting, I know I sent the email out to folks, we're asking you to hold the date for August 17th for a joint meeting with the Regional Planning Commission and the Regional Planning Governing Board. Our idea here is we're going to take a leaf out of Reno's book to some extent and bring together those two boards at certain points along the way in the regional plan update so that the conversation is held with both kind of bodies in the room and, you know, we can have, I think, some brisk, good discussion around that. So that, I believe, is my report. Yep, it's my report.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Kim.
Is that as good as it gets?
I think so. I know, I'm sorry.
Okay, then we have legal counsel's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to present with a letter, no report, nothing to report on today.
Okay, thank you. Item 9, request for future agenda items. Any requests? Okay, seen none. Christine, is there any public comment?
No, I have no more.
Okay. Kim, is there any written correspondence?
There is none.
Okay. Then in that case, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, thank you.